We'll now move to item five, a discussion regarding placement of consolidation of auditor, controller, and treasurer tax collector offices on the November ballot. And what we're discussing is, do we want to give direction to staff to come back with a specific agenda item?
Correct. So it would take, to bring this back for a future agenda item, it would take about 10 hours of staff time from county council. It would be brought back next week in order to, for you to make a timely discussion and/or decision as it relates to the November ballot.
Supervisor Wagon Connect.
I asked to have this put on, and it's part of, part of all of this, and it feeling rushed, is that I asked to have it put on last week. And the timeframe is such that we have to talk about it today. It has to be put on the ballot. It has to be voted on next week, and it has to be put on the ballot the following week. So it just, it has to go boom, boom, boom. And so that's, that's what got it back, back, and it makes it look like the process is hurried and rushed. And it is, because that's, there is a deadline with the, with putting it on the ballot. First, you know, at this point, I'm, I'm not going to ask that you all follow me down this rabbit hole of this. It's, I truly, I truly think this is the right idea in, in the overall, in the overall benefit of the, of the county in the long term. But it's not, it's not ripe right now. It's not, you know, I don't think, I don't think it would, it would, it would go right now. I want to talk a little bit about, first, you know, this is nothing about the people that are serving in the positions today. Bob and Tracy are very hardworking. They are, they do a good job for the county of Napa. They are very honest and hardworking. And so I, this was not about, not about them. I think their departments are, are good. And I, in my mind, I, I had them leading the new, the new department at the end of it, in my mind. One of the things I found in, in this process is that there's, there's, there's poor communication in the, in the county, and poor, and some poor teamwork in the county. And that's something I would like to see, see worked on. And you, you can see that, that, that what I, you know, that my communication wasn't, wasn't good, and it, it, it begat a lot of, a lot of issues for people that I probably didn't mean to have, you know, that I didn't mean to have upset about, about it. And if I'd have communicated better, it would have been, it would have, it could have, it could have worked out better. My intention at this point is, you know, I've got limited, I've got limited time left on the, on the board. I intend to try to figure out a, a good proposal to put, bring forward. I've got, I think I have one, one or two more elections that I could propose, and so I would, I'm going to work on that over the next while. But it was nothing about the, the people that are there. It was, it was my, my attempt to, to improve, improve the county, and people can have, there can be disagreement about that, but this was my attempt to, to do that. And I think that's, that's all I need to say right now.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. And thank you Supervisor Wagon Connect for giving us your, your thoughts and your intentions. I can say, I myself was a bit surprised, and certainly the correspondence that, that we have all received shares in that same surprise, mostly about the timing and, and the process. Before, we have discussed consolidation, something that I, I was in favor of under completely different circumstances. And that would be, we had an open seat, and the question of consolidation, for me, was one of the elected position. You know, we have a, you know, I'm going to use county with a big C and a little c. And when, and with no disrespect to, to my colleagues here, the five of us, we're the little c. But the auditor, controller, and the treasurer tax collector are the big c. And the money that they control, the oversight that they provide, and, and the, the triple checks and balances, the, the works between the auditor, controller, treasurer tax collector, and the assessor, is responsible for the entire county, in addition to the county, to the school districts, in addition to the school district, the special districts, of which there's a whole slew of them in each of our, in each of our districts. For, for me, you know, I, I think we, we need to, I agree, we, we have a job before us Supervisor Wagon Connect, in terms of communication. I don't, I, I think I can, I can say confidently, you know, we, we all need to be creative in how we're looking for efficiencies, especially as we saw ourselves entering, entering the, the budget season with the $9 million hole that we had. And I, I think that this is an opportunity for us, perhaps, and if I, if I can here, redirect our efforts into looking at our efficiency and in our transparency as part of our strategic plan of where we can create these opportunities of, of what I see as cross-training and development to, to continue to make the county fiscally sound. And I think that perhaps that might be a way to, to redirect this. I myself am, am not in favor of eliminating either elected office at this point, as I do believe that they independently provide a level of oversight to the little c county and the big c county. And they also provide during a time of great scrutiny over government access and transparency that I think is vital to ensure that we continue to engage our community during what I hope will be a short-lived, difficult time. It doesn't seem to be short, short-lived at, at this moment. I don't think that this is the right move for the county of Napa and Napa County as a whole.
Yeah, appreciate Supervisor Wagon Connect giving us that early off-ramp from this idea. Appreciate that. But your, your thought behind it was good. I put a lot of value in having two independently elected people overseeing these two important departments. And any consolidation, it had to bring us value far in excess of that for me to be interested in doing this, at least right now. And then the analysis to bring us that kind of thoughtful considered staff report, just, I just can't see it being done in a week or even two or a month. So I'm glad that this looks like it might be going away for the moment.
Supervisor Pedrosa.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to thank Supervisor Wagon Connect. I think these are moments where you have to look deep, and sometimes you can't play it safe all the time. And we have to have these conversations for this institution that's going to outlive us. And I think sometimes you have to have those uncomfortable conversations. So I do thank Supervisor Wagon Connect for, for provoking this. This is not about people, because I think we have great people that are committed to this institution and the public service, and we've been the benefactors of all the good work that you all have done. But at the same time, there's going to be people that follow us. And I think for me, my interests, it's, I bifurcate this conversation. The first step, and I think my finance background comes in, is if you can consolidate the functions, it doesn't mean you're getting, you're giving away the checks and balances, because I think we talked about that before, where you can consolidate departments. Second part of that, whether that becomes an elected or appointed position, is I think where a lot of the consternation, concern can bow. And that's okay. I think that's democracy. You've got to have those conversations. But I think, just some of the things I want to share is, when we talk about transparency, that's an important term, and this board talked about this in September, and we had a presentation on that, and we talked about it. Now, how we go forward, I think there's where we can have some improvement. This is not something I want to do to someone I want to do it with, because if we can do something to better this institution, and all those cities and special districts that invest their money in the treasury, I think that's a huge responsibility. But we also have to look long-term. How do we leave this county in a better position than we inherited it? And sometimes that means you have to make these tough decisions. When you look at our revenues and our expenses, they're structurally imbalanced, and we have to make these decisions if we want this quality of life. So for me, I support where we're going, but I still think we need to find a space to have this conversation where it's not emotionally charged or people-driven, because someday there's going to be different people in these seats, and I hope they can look back and say that, you know, we took on these tough conversations that Supervisor Wagon Connect provoked. So I support where we're going, but I, I hope that we can still have those conversations in a collaborative way. But again, I bifurcate the conversation of, I think the consolidation of departments is something that we do need to entertain. What happens after that, whether it's elected or appointed, I think we do need to talk about that, and again, in a collective way.
I echo, I echo those comments. This isn't the first time that Supervisor Wagon Connect and I have been in a discussion about this. It was September 2008, when we were headed into the Great Recession. And I supported this effort because I think we are facing another situation like that. And where the rubber, rubber will really hit the road monetarily is not this year or even next year. I'm talking about calendar years, but two years away. And, which is when this proposal, if put on the ballot, would have become effective. So we talked about it in 2008. That was about creating one elected department. And as I recall, it was Supervisor Wagon Connect who said, and it was about, was that when we were supporting the legislation? I've gotten confused now. I didn't write down notes here. But it, it was, we also, being the seniors here in the group, have lived through having someone in an elected position in this county, in one of these positions, who would, it was scary. And so consolidating that, that's pre Ms. Kindig. It was pre Ms. Schultz, so, but not pre Mr. Tudor. And so we, you know, so there's a lot of concern about that. And I think there is a way to do this. The progressive counties in our state, I mean, counties that I consider as progressive as us, if not more, Marin, Yolo, and many others, I think they're 16 to 20, have gone down a route of having a department of finance. And if one looks at how Yolo, for instance, I think is one of the most recent did it, there is a way to do this that can achieve savings, as Mr. Minahan's predecessor, Mr. Hudak, pointed out to us. This is a $1.5 million savings over five years. I, I'm, that's going out of memory as to what his recommendation was about why this should be done. So I would like, if this is not going to go on the ballot this year, I would most certainly like to see us discuss this as a future agenda item, as part of, of things we can do to make this institution more efficient. It's where, you know, we were told in 2008, we were told by, Ms. Schultz had a fabulous presentation in 2018 about why this was a great idea. So I think that this is an idea worth pursuing. It's very interesting. We had nobody, we didn't have anybody show up to discuss it from the outside in either, or that I can recall, in either '08 or '18. But we're in a different time now. So I think, I think it's a discussion worth having, because there are other models out there that might be, that I think are definitely worth considering. So, and I thank you, Mr. Wagon Connect, for bringing it up again, especially when you were the person in 2008, was on the other side. That takes, that's maturity, which we seem to have gained more and more of each day. So I don't have any other lights on, and I guess there's no need for direction to staff. Are there any, I guess I'll take public comment, although there doesn't appear that we're going anywhere with this. Is there any public comment? Ms. Schultz.
Tracy Schultz, auditor controller. To clarify a misconception being told, I am not in support of consolidation to an appointed position. In fact, I'm not in support of any consolidation, as there's no longer a vacancy to fill. The next misconception is that your board reviews this topic every few years. Your board reviewed it when two elected positions in 2007 announced their retirements. Two longstanding officials, Marshall Hall and Pam Kindig. The discussion, the discussion was short, as it was not something the board was interested in, with the biggest concern of giving too much control to one person. The next discussion, as you discussed, took place after treasurer tax collector Tammy Fraser announced her retirement in September of 2018. That was almost two years ago, not just last September. And that was 11 years later, after the first discussion. At that time, because of the retirement, I asked for the opportunity to explore and provide options in a public session, a complete analysis of the pros and cons, as well as opportunities and concerns. However, I don't recall ever having been afforded that opportunity to give my presentation, so I'm not really sure what presentation you're discussing, talking about, Supervisor Dillon. I wasn't able to give it in public. It was dismissed, and Supervisor Wagon Connect, rightfully so, clearly stated, as he did say, that he is only interested in a consolidated position if it were appointed. The topic was not brought up again. It was clear your board was not interested in consolidation. Since then, we had another election for treasurer tax collector, and the voters chose the most qualified candidate, Bob Minahan. That was just four months ago. Last Tuesday, three members of the board supported a discussion for a future agenda item, not only for consolidation, but also removing the power of the voters, no longer caring about their prior concerns of one person having all the power, and rushing through without talking to either Bob and I. And I understand you're going to not do that now, so I appreciate that. But you didn't talk to either one of us, the cities, the town, the schools, the special districts, or the voters of the county. And you wanted to get it on the ballot in one week. I do want to thank Belia. She was one of the only supervisors that reached out to me that day, actually wondering what was going on. The premise being used is to provide cost savings during this COVID crisis. It's ironic, since a proposed action cannot be in effect until our terms are up two and a half years from now. Further irony is that if the decision was based on knowledge and facts, you would know that these other counties that have consolidated have experienced minimal cost savings, maybe $100,000 a year. And even that doesn't get realized for about three to five years. Besides the physical restructuring of offices, the cost to mitigate the negative impact on staff due to the merging of the two offices, you will also incur new costs for independent oversight of the items mandated by the state related to the segregation of duties and the internal controls that are now currently in place with two individual offices. Lastly, you will lose all independence within the county over taxpayer funds, which I would argue could cost the taxpayers a great deal more than your $100,000 projected savings that may occur in three years. Again, I do not support this, nor do I, nor do I support the process. This is not how Napa operates. The lack of communication, the lack of understanding, the lack of coming together as a unified body for the people to make a real educated decision, the people meaning you five people, the lack of public process to get this on a ballot in a rushed manner, this all just makes it the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Minahan?
Good afternoon, Chair Dillon, members of the board, Bob Minahan, your treasurer tax collector. I was not in, in favor of this proposal, and I felt completely blindsided by the whole process. In my history in governmental finance, I've never seen a board propose the elimination of two elected offices while those offices were occupied, and without any vocalized support from, from the public. The last time consolidation was discussed, your board was highly concerned with the potential denigration of internal control structure, effectively the checks and balances. And this proposal has done nothing to address those concerns, and will effectively, would have effectively eliminated an elected office with independent oversight, not only over your board, but over the county executive office. This is the ultimate sacrifice in checks and balances. The three entities involved have varying responsibilities when it comes to the county expenditures, as well as financial stewardship. I think there are very, very solid ways that we can get through this. Tracy and I take it, we hold in high regard our responsibility in preparing a succession plan in which our former boss Pam Kindig did with Tracy. She brought her in, allowed the board time to get comfortable with her, allowed the community time to get comfortable with her, and allowed Tracy to prove that she was worthy of the spot. We take that responsibility very heavily, and we strive to do the exact same thing. We're happy to discuss this issue moving forward. We would be happy to discuss the possibilities and add our expertise to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minahan. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment, is in the room? Mr. Coleman?
First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you very much to Ms. Schultz here for bravely expressing the truth and providing clarity and transparency to the community, those you watching at home. I'm in favor of making sure Bob Minahan keeps his job. The consistency that I've noticed here today is of a power grab. When we have elected officials in positions, they are in those positions because they're experts in those positions, and we, the people, have put them in those positions. So not only are you going after the planning commission, but now you're going after the treasury. I mean, when, when is this going to end? When are you guys going to understand that there are lanes, and there are reasons for lanes? Checks and balances are a key fundamental footprint of the power structure, of the way government entities work. And they must remain in place in order to prevent too much power and influence from one department, individual, or business entity. Perhaps I'm wrong with what I'm seeing, because of my slanted view of members of the board, because of the lack of action and the implementation of policies that don't make any sense regarding COVID-1984. But if I'm wrong, someone please help me to understand the legitimacy behind these decisions. How insulting Bob Minahan must have felt to have been blindsided. For him to come here today and stand up, I must applaud him. I think that it is extremely rude to have someone that was recently put into position to sweat, to make an attempt to sweat them out of position without as much as a post-it or an email, or take them out to lunch. That is very unbecoming of anyone that I would have represent my vote. This activity with the lack of transparency has become the staple of this board. I am demanding more transparency. It's for the people, by the people. You guys are representing us, not doing what you think is right for us. You're representing us, we, the people. These constitutions and rules and regulations are set in place to prevent government infringement, and here you are infringing. The city or county attorney, oh, well, you only said 21 words and 20 are allowed. Hey, it's 21 words. That's one word too many. It's not cool. It's not okay. When I'm parked for 25 minutes instead of 24, I get a ticket. So if it says 20, it's 20, period. So if you want to talk about accountability, you want to sit over there and chuckle, then don't be in the position where you're dictating rules and regulations, guidelines, if you're not capable of following them. Wish I could drop this mic.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to comment? All right. Is there anyone on the phone?
There is. There are several folks. The first person is Deborah Dollman. And Ms. Dollman, if you're on the line, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
I am. Thank you. And I had a different set of comments to relate had the board made a different decision. But I want to thank the board for the discussion that you have had and the decision that you have come to. And I also want to thank Tracy and Bob and Wendell for their comments. It's inspiring to hear both the elected officials and the community come together. And I know there are a lot more people in Napa County that were extremely disappointed with the lack of transparency. Amy Martin's comments regarding the Brown Act have left a mark with me. And Jeff Brax, you can do what you want to explain it away, but this should have been identified more clearly on the agenda. And I hope in the future, going forward, that you will take note of this and make sure that the agenda is clearly defined, so that people, that the constituents that you all represent, understand what is going to be discussed on the agenda. Thank you.
The next person is Matt Wilkinson. And let me bring that phone call up. Mr. Wilkinson, if you're on, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi. My name's Matt Wilkinson. I live in Napa, Pernero. I'm a vice president of digital transformation at SAP. We're a global software vendor with 100,000 employees, and we operate across 85 countries. And in my 35-year career, I've become an expert in accounting, compliance, audit, as well as redesigning large, complex organizations for optimization and efficiency in implementing those changes. While I appreciate the need to scale back spending during COVID-19 crisis, I fear the proposal is ill-advised. I'm glad it's not moving forward right now. I, I fear pursuing this in the future is also ill-advised for a number of reasons. First, unless you're intimately familiar with the duties of these offices, which are prescribed by the state, by state law, and unless you're clear-eyed about costs and resources associated with delivering these services, it's easy to fall for lightly-vetted notions about trimming positions and making people work smarter without degrading service. Before you make this mistake and find yourself facing compliance violations or combining duties which, under best practices, for $700 million of taxpayer money, should be kept separate, I urge you to step back and consider how flawlessly these services are delivered today. My feeling is the risk you take on is not nearly as worth the small savings you might realize. Second, it's true under the proposal that you eliminate the cost of one department head, but with your combination idea, you'll undoubtedly need to hire external service providers to fulfill mandatory separation of duties mandate, since you've combined two organizations, which are by design supposed to be kept separate. Any cost saving, any cost savings will quickly evaporate. Third, the department head position you hope to eliminate is duly elected by Napa County voters and will receive compensation until January 2023. They expect a vaccine for the virus widespread in the U.S. by mid- They expect a vaccine for the virus widespread in the U.S. by mid-July 2021. So it seems with our brief reopening, for us love to return to Napa, and our economy is likely to bounce back. So it feels to me as though the rationale for your change does not sync up with the actual outcome of the change. Fourth, both departments provide critical oversight services to their customers, our taxpayers, and voters in the county. The Board of Supervisors sets the policy to part, these departments provide the oversight and competence to taxpayers and voters, but the board and the county supervisors, county CEOs, do not violate these policies. If you pick, if you hand-pick someone to head the combined department under the board or the county CEO, and that person lacks integrity or feels pressured to degrade oversight services out of fear of losing their jobs, Napa County taxpayers and voters will lose. Finally, the deadline, what's up?
Next person, yeah, next person on line is Amber Manfred. Ms. Manfred, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Given that it looks like this item isn't moving forward, and there's already been a lot of great comments, I'm going to submit most of my comments and write the report. The only thing I want to bring up is, is really that, in addition to there being no problem with the current arrangement, and in addition to this process, I think having some, some issues with not being open, particularly because there's so many different departments and, and special districts, joint powers authorities in the county that rely on the services of the Treasurer-Tax Collector and Auditor Controller, none of those people were consulted before bringing this forward in this way, which, which just seems very indirect and, and ultimately inappropriate. But the main, the main thing I want to talk about is that, that the proposed arrangement of having the Board of Supervisors appoint someone into this position would be really awkward for the cities, the special districts, and the joint powers authorities. That's because they're not necessarily directly under the Board of Supervisors, those agencies and authorities in their management structure. So having the Board of Supervisors choose the person who's managing all their money just creates a very strange power dynamic, and I don't think one that would be good towards the community. So, yeah, I think it's really important that the Auditor, Controller, and Treasurer-Tax Collector remain elected positions, because they need to have independence over not only the Board of Supervisors, but also all of those other special districts and authorities and the cities. So that's, that's my comment, and thanks for your time today.
Next person is going to be Eve Khan.
Hello, this is Eve Khan, Napa resident. I want you to mark this day down in history, because it's probably one of the first times that Deborah Dollman and I totally agree. She was very accurate in her statements, and I want to reinforce two pieces that have been brought up multiple times this afternoon, and that is one of independence, and the other is transparency. One of the things that Deborah mentioned is, was a real concern, and I've reached out to, to men and to my supervisor, Brad, because the one line, whether it's 20 or 25 words, seems quite innocuous, you know, quite tame. Okay, you're going to talk about future agenda items. I've seen this happen with David Morrison. But when you happen to be prudish enough to open that link and see the five, now six things that are on here, and the impact they could have, it shocked me. And, and I'm not the first person to suggest, and I don't know if it violates any Brown Act or whatever, but just like with other items, I don't understand why that you couldn't have, these are the future agenda items, one through five, one through six. At least we would have had a clue, because many of these are not trivial tasks or recommendations. And I think this one kind of hit a sore spot for a lot of people, because you have a timeline here that would have rushed this through. And I'm glad that many of us in the community reached out to others to alert them to come out and speak. And so I just want to reiterate what Tracy and Bob and Amber and other people have mentioned about the independence. And if there's one thing to consolidate offices, it's another to take away that opportunity to have the public vote and that independence. So thank you so much for, at least putting this off, and I hope if this ever comes back, that this whole issue of appointment is not even part of it. Thank you very much.
Next is going to be James Hinton. Go ahead, Mr. Hinton.
Yeah, hello, this is James Hinton calling in from Utah. I'm in the state of Utah now. So I want to first say that I really appreciate the comments made by Tracy and Bob, opening up public comment today. I'm really sorry that they had to be threatened in this fashion. I'm, I'm sorry they had to be stressed out by this political agenda. And I'm really finding it interesting how Tracy basically kind of cleared the air on some misinformation that was circulating with this agenda item, that she wanted to eliminate the position, and she thought somehow Brad Wagonconnect would be better off picking somebody to serve us than, than us voters did. And hearing Diane and you complain that everybody's not working together, and you don't like it, guess what? Instead of running for Supervisor, why don't you run for Treasurer or Tax Collector then? And show us how it's done, instead of pointing your fingers at other local elected officials and challenging them on every little thing they do. Instead of trying everybody, to get everybody to work with you, the Board of Supervisors, how about you work with us, the people, and some of the elected, the people we elected to represent us? How about you give a little? How about you compromise your position on things, instead of acting like dictators? And you know, Brad, you just, every month, what is Hitler going to do next? He's going to consolidate power. He's going to lie to us, and he tries to do it. I would encourage our community to band together against these crazy politicians, Diane, dictator Dylan, and Brad Know-Nothing Wagonconnect. And let's recall them, let's use our democratic checks and balances, let's circulate petitions, and bounce these two fascist clowns who are dividing our community instead of bringing us together. They want to consolidate power instead of solve our crises, they need to go. This is ridiculous that you try to shove it down our throat and go wham bam bam, so you can put a bunch of money behind it and get rid of them. During Bob's campaign against Mike Dasein, you never brought this up at all. It was never a letter to the editor about kicking him out of office or nothing. But now that Bob won, I guess there's a problem with him, huh? I guess it's an issue now, and he want to take his mic away. You're an idiot, Brad. You're, why don't you just stand up and resign and walk out of that, as the Board of Supervisors before I get out of Utah? It'd be a real, a real treat for me, because otherwise, I think I'm going to hit the streets and recall you. I think I'm going to take that petition, and I'm going to find somebody to put up about 10 grand to finance it, and we're going to, we're going to see what the people want, who they want, Bob or Brad.
And we have Jose Poste Hernandez, who is the last person. Mr. Hernandez, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name's Jose Hernandez. I live at 2591 Harvest Lane, Napa. Retired educator, been living here since 1997. I oppose consolidating of the Auditor and Treasurer-Tax Collector and Board of Supervisors appointment instead of elected. What a disappointment. This does not represent democracy, it circumvents our public policy. Gracias.
And that's all.
Thank you. I don't think we need any more discussion on that. So I'm not seeing anyone disagree with that statement. So we will now move, sorry, I buried my list here. We'll now move to items, excuse me?
If I may, if we could please call a recess for, for a moment?
Oh, sure, we've been here an hour and a half, thank you. I get caught, caught up. Okay, we'll recess till 3:30.